December 3rd, 2024. Reorganizing of the Carleton School District Board of Directors is called order. Mr. Smith given that the schedule, would you like to present?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America for its standing for our nation under God, with the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Will Secretary please call the roll?
Director Apple?
Here.
Director Luke?
Here.
Director Honchar?
Here.
Director Simsek? Here. Director Puskar? Here. Director O'Brien? Here. Director Zalinski?
She is unable to be here tonight?
Director Vogliano? Here. Director Schreiber?
Here. There's a moment at the beginning of each meeting where we invite the public to ask questions about items on the agenda. So tonight for the reorg agenda, is there any questions about any agenda items just for the reorg meeting? Not this question time later. We'll jump into nomination. So the board reorganizes and disolates here and we reelect our officers and all of our committee appointments. So to start things off, board, we don't have any members yet. We need a temporary president. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I so move to nominate Susie Puskar as our temporary president.
Wonderful.
I second that. Is that worth it?
Wonderful. Are there any other nominations for temporary president? If not, we'll close nominations for temporary president? Do I have a motion to close? So move seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries.
So where should we go?
So let's. Now we're going to vote on.
Oh, we have a nomination.
We're going to vote on the sole candidate for temporary president, Director Puskar. All those in favor of Director Puskar being our temporary president, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries and.
Thank you. I don't actually need to gamble, but thank you for trusting me. President is important role. So I as temporary president now am going to hold the nominations for president of the Carleton Board of Directors.
I move to nominate Jen Schreiber as president.
I second.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to close nominations.
So move second.
All those in favor of closing nominations?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any seen? Alright, so a motion has been made that Director Schreiber is up for election as school board president. All those in favor? Oh, we have to move. We have to move. Sorry. Screwed this up. Why don't you power? Okay, you moved in second today. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ascend. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the kind of interest I have too.
I know, give her some tools. Love them. Love them.
Now turning to the role of vice president. I'll entertain nominations for the role of vice president.
I nominate Joe Apple. Second to that nomination.
Second. Any other nominations for vice president? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close the floor for nominations for vice president.
So move second.
Moved in seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Floor is closed. Now we can vote.
Jessica means one, two.
Yeah.
Good point. So now we have a motion on the floor for a signature for vice president. All those in favor of having Director Apple serve as our.
Did you get the second? Did anybody make the motions for the nominations? Tell me, tell me, tell me.
For the one? Yeah, for Joe. Yes, move in as second. And since we closed nominations and then we voted at closes, so now we're going to vote for Canada. Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to approve Joe Apple as the vice president of the Carleton School District Board of Directors.
Push car. So move.
Second.
That's what we like.
Perfect. Let's vote. I'm doing it really slowly. Let's vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Congratulations, Director. Thank you very much. Moving on to the rest of our positions, we have a legislative and PSBA representative. So Director Simsek, you have been.
It's been me.
Just, I wrote it down wrong in my paper, so my apologies.
Why are you disappointed?
No, no. So, Director Bogliano. So you have been graciously serving as a PSBA rep for the last year. Would you be willing to continue to do that?
Yes.
Wonderful. So I'll entertain a motion on the floor.
So move second. Simsek, second.
To approve Director Vogliano as a PSBA legislative rep. Moved in second by Director O'Brien and Director Simsek. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Thank you. Won't make that mention. Alright, let's see if I got the next one. So Pathfinder, I have Director Honchar. You've been serving as Pathfinder for quite a while. Are you willing to continue?
Yes.
Wonderful. Susie, I have Director Puskar as the.
Absolutely.
Alright.
I give up for a definite.
Fantastic. To the team, I'll say I'll entertain a motion to approve George Honchar as the representative and Susie Puskar as the backup representative for Pathfinder. Do I have a motion for that?
So move second.
Moved by Director Simsek and seconded by Director Vogliano. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Shajda, so Director Zalinski has a work commitment in his honor. He'll be here tonight, but she did express a willingness to continue to serve as our Shajda rep. And in the past, if I have it right, Director Bogliano, you've been backup, wonderful. And you're willing to continue to do that?
Yes.
Wonderful. So I'll entertain a motion to appoint in her absence Director Zalinski as a representative and Director Vogliano as the backup representative for Shajda.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Director O'Brien, seconded by Director Apple. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Alright. Harper West, Director Apple, you've been serving at both for quite a while. Are you willing to do? Wonderful. And Director Zalinski expressed an interest in being a backup. And Director Honchar, you've also requested to be backup?
Yes, please.
So to the floor, I'll entertain a motion to approve Director Apple as the main representative and Director Zalinski and Honchar as the backup representatives for Harper. Do I have such a motion?
So move second.
Move to second. Good. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Congratulations, fellow D. Foundation representative, here is where I can turn to Director Simsek. Okay. So Chris, you have served this for several years now. Are you willing to do that? Wonderful. To the group, I'll entertain a motion to have Chris Simsek approved as our representative through the foundation.
So move second. One, two.
Oh, I thought you said. It is something.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Congratulations, Chris. Thank you. Alright, now to the committees. We have a finance committee. Again, in her absence, Director Zalinski had requested the ability to stay on as the chair of that committee. And we graciously got a motion to say yes. And Director Vogliano, you and I serve as the members of the committee. So to the group, I'll entertain a motion to approve Director Zalinski as the chair and Director Vogliano and Schreiber as the members of the finance.
So move. Second.
Moved in second. Honchar and Simsek, thank you very much. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Building of the grounds committee, Director Luke, you've been serving. Wonderful. You're willing to do the end?
Yes.
And then Director Puskar and Director O'Brien. Will you continue to do that? Wonderful.
I think I'm on it.
You are on it as well. So.
I think that's the education for you, but I'd be happy to serve in building grounds.
I went to the wrong spot on my. I actually have Director Zalinski and Honchar as the building grounds. You want another committee?
No, okay. I'm just.
Alright, beautiful. So I amend my motion to process. Director Luke as the chair and Director Zalinski and Honchar as the members of the buildings and foundations. That's correct. Alright, I'll entertain a motion to move. Thank you. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Rachel, you're good. Wonderful. Alright. Now the educational technology committee. Director Simsek, you've been the chair, willing to do it?
Yes.
Liam?
Yes.
Wonderful. So I'll entertain a motion to approve Director Simsek as the chair and Director Puskar and O'Brien as members of the education and technology committee.
So move.
Moved by Director Vogliano, seconded by Director Luke. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Okay, the hard part is done. We have a newspaper. I'll entertain a motion to approve the Post Gazette as official newspaper for the school district.
So move second.
Moved in second. Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Not the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Meeting calendar. We had the administration chair of meeting calendar with us. I'll entertain a motion to approve the meeting calendar as proposed.
So move second.
Moved in second. Thank you. Any questions or discussions? Not the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Last under this section is our solicitor. So we've had Angels and Prays for quite a while and I think they've done a phenomenal job and I believe I'll entertain a motion to reapprove Angels and Prays as our solicitor.
I so.
Second.
Moved in second. Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Not the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries.
I'm delighted to thank you all again for your continued support and we look forward to working with you for a longer period. Thank you.
Thanks, Tony.
Thank you, Tony, for breaking up half of our arguments. You say this is a peaceful board.
You and Park.
Good. Let's keep it peaceful.
Any other items or shall we adjourn our reorganization? So move. Moved in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The reorganization meeting is adjourned. Called a order. We've already done a pledge at the beginning, so we move right to the roll call for this meeting. Please take your oath.
Director Honchar?
Here.
Director Luke?
Here.
Director Apple? Here. Director O'Brien? Here. Director Puskar? Here. Director Simsek? Here. Director Vogliano? Here. Director Zalinski? And Director Schreiber?
Chair. There's a moment at the beginning of each meeting where we invite the public to comment on agenda items, so we have a voting meeting now. If anybody would like to comment or have a question about an agenda item on the voting meeting tonight? If not, we'll move on. Approval of minutes. Board, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting under section two.
So move second.
Moved in second. Any questions or discussion? We'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. I'll report that we had an executive session part of this meeting where we discussed personnel matters, real estate, legal, and student matters. I now turn to Dr. Craig for the superintendent report.
Thank you, Director Schreiber. It's always a privilege to highlight in many ways that our community supports and contributes to the school district. Tonight I'd like to share two examples of generosity that are on the board agenda for approval. First, we have a motion to accept a donation from the ZERCO group in the amount of $400. This donation will be used to support the PBIS model at the junior senior high schools, specifically in grades seven and eight. PBIS plays a critical role in fostering a positive school culture by promoting and recognizing positive behaviors among students. This contribution will allow us to further enhance our efforts in engaging respectful, responsible, and safe behavior from our students. I'm incredibly gracious for the contribution from the ZERCO group to support that and thank Mrs. Burleson for reaching out and securing that donation. Second, we have a donation from, to accept the donation for picnic tables from the Crafton PTA at a value of $2,795.55. These tables will provide an outdoor space for those at recess to enjoy some private time away from all the hustle and bustle of recess in nice shaded areas where our students can relax. Crafton PTA has consistently demonstrated their dedication to enriching the experiences of our students and their generous gift is yet another example of their support. On behalf of the Carleton School District, I greatly appreciate ZERCO group and the Crafton PTA for their continued support and investment in our students. I'd also like to take the opportunity to highlight and celebrate the success of the fall athletic season by recognizing the accomplishments of our student athletes. Their hard work, determination, and sportsmanship have been remarkable and have represented our district with pride. Several notable accomplishments across the district this fall. Girls cross-country team had an outstanding season, finishing third in the Whipple as the team advanced to the PIAA state champions. At the PIAA championships, the team finished in impressive fifth place out of a total of 119 teams. Freshman Laney Cleveland placed eighth in the Whipple individually, which is certainly an impressive performance there. On the boys team, sophomore Ethan Muldivan advanced to the PIAA state championships, qualifying for the second consecutive year. And with only two boys on the cross-country team, recruitment is in process to build and strengthen that team for future success. Varsity football team finished with an overall record of six and four and qualified for the Whipple playoffs, which is the first time since 2001, competing in their inaugural season in class AA. Devonte Dean was named Defensive Player of the Year, which was a tremendous honor. We also had four players who qualified for first team all-conference, three players that qualified for second team all-conference, and six players as honorable mention for all-conference. Also, head coach John Tortia was recognized as the Steelers' Coach of the Week for his leadership. We have three golfers that participate in golf with a co-op of Bishop Hannigan, achieving an impressive 11-1 record. Boys soccer team finished 12-7 and also advanced to the Whipple playoffs where a hard fight against Eaton Christian in overtime, unfortunately. That's where the season came to an end. Our own school board representative, Mateo Carrasco, along with Mamas Delezo were named co-players of the year and both along with Connor Hart earned ball section honors. The girls soccer team had an incredible 14-5 season, advancing to the Whipple playoffs when the team narrowly lost to four penalty kick in the shootout. Sophomore Riley Moro was named the all-whipple and she along with teammates Grace Propelka and Quinlan Del Rosio earned all-section honors. With most of the team returning, including a strong group of freshmen and sophomores, the future is bright for this program. In tennis, senior Grace Propelka qualified for the Whipple singles tournament, finishing third in the section. This year, the team fielded 10 players, which is the largest roster that we've had in years, showing growth and promise for continued improvement. Also, the first-year head coach, Amelie Malcolm. The girls volleyball team had a competitive 9-9 record, narrowly missing the playoffs after a close match against Keystone Oaks. And competing in class AA for the first time, the team showed resilience and growth. All section honors in that area, first team, Jordan Carter and Olivia Thompson, both were also named all-whipple. Second team, Amelia Babbage. And third team, Carly Hughes and Lucy Better. As these results demonstrate, Carleton's fall athletics program has been certainly a season for success. Our student athletes do an outstanding job. We recognize that they are scholars first and they're athletes second, and they continue to represent the district well and they do their best to support it. So we certainly appreciate our athletic director, our coaches, our families, our players for all their continued support of our athletics program. And we hope that the success of the fall season certainly builds and trickles into a successful winter and spring season as well. That concludes my report. It was a lot.
Can anybody remember a time when our athletics was that successful across the board?
No.
It's phenomenal.
Nineteen.
It's been a long time. That's a testament to you said, the athletic director, the coaches, and the kids just being high performance. Really impressive. Any questions or comments? Moving on to committees. Director Vogliano, since I screwed you up for this time, you're going to go first. Legislative and PSBA Director Vogliano.
I have no. I have to extend the one. A little bit excessive. So on November 2nd, members of the PSBA help the election result for new officers at the Delamette Assembly, and those new officers will take place January 1st. And the new president will be Allison Mathis for local school district. So it'll be good to have representation from Western Pennsylvania and leadership on PSBA. On December 1st, PD announced that aspiring educators can now receive an interim certificate for free, enabling them to enter the classroom and teach for up to three years while taking educational classes on a path to earn their full teaching certification. So basically how that works is they get this interim certificate. That means that they pass the content test demonstrating they have the knowledge to teach in a specific content area and must only complete their professional core education work in student teaching before becoming fully certified. Entrants have three-year certificates, giving them the chance to complete this while earning paid as a teacher of record. Previously, they would have had to pay $200 for the certificate and another $200 once they completed it. And so by waiving this fee, PD goes to incentivize more individuals to pursue this option and encourage more school-styled interns to address their immediate standing needs. Pennsylvania Department of Education Secretary, Dr. Mu Min, announces resignation in late November. He will officially step down on December 6th, 2024. And Angela Fitterer, the Executive Deputy Secretary for Department of Education, will serve as the acting and interim secretary. And lastly, just as FYI, that FAFSA application is open up on November 21st. So that's apparently they redid all of the FAFSA applications, so it's supposed to be very, very seamless and easy now. Just kidding. They lied. They said it was like four tests that like pile up to make sure this was going to be good. Maybe, I'm sorry.
It ends up being okay.
Their definition of good seems to be very loose. Well, that's all it has.
It was better than it was previously. Thank you very much. I'll circle back to Director Apple. Any updates for Harper West?
Harper West.
Okay. Director Honchar, any updates on Pathfinder?
Yes. First of all, let me show you this beautiful entry. Our Pathfinder kids made the Juana statue as an entry at the city county building.
Oh, wow.
Out of guess.
Skittles.
Rice Krispies. So if anybody's visiting the city county building up through the week before Christmas, please vote for Pathfinder. I mean, it's just amazing. Beautiful. Okay, and we're in need of two paraprofessionals at Pathfinder plus two personal care assistants, if anybody knows or would want to apply. We have 85 kids prior to Thanksgiving, 86 after Thanksgiving, as of this week. That's in the board report.
Thank you. With Director Zalinski being gone, any Shajda updates? Director Craig? Director Simsek, any updates on the foundation?
I have not got a feeling, sorry.
Do we expect to have events in the spring?
Um, I don't know. I'm assuming that we're going to have case of Carl. But I don't have a date.
Thank you. Any questions about any of the committee? If not, we'll move on. So we have student representatives with the course.
Hello, my name is Rose Highfield and I'm the student representative of the junior class.
My name is Mateo Carrasco and I'm the student representative of the senior class. And there hasn't been a lot happening, but we're honored to have the opportunity to highlight some of the fun things that students are taking beside school.
Yeah. Like you said, not much has happened since our last meeting, but I would like to talk about the butterfly mural that we painted as in our class for Carnegie Park. And I keep bringing it up, but I think it's so awesome that we got to go and paint. We haven't really heard anything back from the mayor for the celebration, but Pittsburgh Post Giza or Gazette published our newspaper and it was actually featured in it and it was titled "The Butterfly Effect," so I thought that was pretty cool. Yeah.
For new business, the boys and girls basketball team have tipped off their season, starting today. I don't know how they're doing, but you know, players, parents, and students are going to watch and are eager to hope the season goes well. Not only basketball season, but bowling season has also begun and has been talked about among several students. Lots of students say they didn't know we had a bowling team, but once finding out, are interested and decide to watch them play and support.
Yeah, and then, pretty general, but the SATs are on December 7th and a lot of kids are very eager and very anxious and is studying and they just want to get a good score, so there's a lot of people talking about it. But this is just one of the many opportunities that students obviously have to be able to take the SATs, so no worries. But that's pretty much it for student representative.
Thank you very much. Quick follow-up on Dr. Craig. Mateo, you had a great season with the doctor team. Did I have it hearing correctly that you set a record for the school?
I did.
You did?
I did.
What was the record?
The single season assist record. Yes. It's now 27.
Congratulations.
27. It was 25. Do you remember Manny Burton?
Absolutely.
It was Manny Burton. And he went to Worcester play. Yeah.
Fantastic. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Any questions about our student representative reports? Under section four miscellaneous, we have a total of five items. No, I'm sorry, four items under our section four miscellaneous. I'll entertain a motion to approve all four items.
So move second.
Director Simsek and Director Puskar. Director O'Brien. Any questions or comments? If not the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Under section five, we have a couple of things. Under section five, we have two items. I'll entertain a motion to approve items one and two under section five.
Second.
Moved to second, thank you. Any questions or comments? If not to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Um, and just to confirm for everybody's reference, the second item is the resolution of trying to exceed our tax rate for this, for next year beyond the index set by the state. So it just, it sets a cap on our tax rate for next year. I'm just saying, we're not gonna go above that. We haven't figured out what it's gonna be yet, but we're not gonna go above the index. Under section six, personnel, I'll entertain a motion to approve the personnel agenda.
So moved.
Moved, thank you. Any second?
Second.
Moved to second, thank you. Any questions or comments? Not to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye? Motion carries. Um, student activities, I'll entertain a motion to approve a single item under student activities, section seven.
So moved. Second.
Moved to second, any questions or discussion? Not to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye? Motion carries. Section eight, policies, I'll entertain a motion to approve the list of policy changes under section eight.
So moved. Second.
Moved to second, thank you very much. Any questions or discussion? Not to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye? Motion carries. Old business, any director, have any old business they would like to bring up?
Back us up to the personnel. Dr. Kreider, maybe you can take a minute to talk about him. We have a president. It might be for our school.
Some more.
There you go. Forward, Kreider.
So we did, we approved the resignation of Sarah Parrish, um, as the building principal at Crafton Elementary School. She is, uh, pursuing another opportunity in another school district. Uh, we will start the, the search process, uh, very shortly, and using a very similar model for what we did with the Carnegie principal position, we will solicit input, not only from the staff, but also from, from the parents of Crafton as well, uh, to identify what the qualities are in their, in their next anticipated leader at Crafton Elementary School. We are considering also a similar model to what we did at Carnegie Elementary, where we, uh, did the Carnegie Elementary Principal slash K-12 ESL Program Coordinator. Uh, we're looking at a very similar type of approach with a different slash towards the end of, uh, of that position. So the elementary principal slash, and we're taking a look at our needs assessments to fully determine what that, um, extra aspect and extra duty will look like. Uh, and as we refine that, we will boil that down then into a job description and post for that position. We certainly thank, uh, Ms. Parrish's, uh, role that she played in the district, although it was for a brief one, she did a terrific job, and the, uh, students and the parents and the staff appreciated her, her hard work and effort. And the administration likewise appreciated everyone that she's done with this. So that will be something that we will move forward with. As in, in the past with, with other positions, it's very difficult to, um, fill a position on day one without any gaps, um, due to being able to hold employees for 60 days when they move between buildings or, or school districts. So we will most likely have some type of interim coverage, um, at Crafton as well, just like we did here at Carnegie. And we look to, to find a interim replacement very shortly. So then, we can, we can hold, you know, 60 days. Corroses to, uh, where?
Mid-January 4th.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Yeah. Okay. Can I ask questions? I don't know if it's public or not.
Our solicitor's recommending it's a personnel issue.
It would be, yeah, that would be a person, one, a personnel issue for us, and then it's a personal issue for her, whether she wants to ask her. Choose the chair.
Can I ask what happened?
You can ask her.
I'll ask her. We were supposed to like chat, but she's not there.
You understand we can't talk about personnel issues.
How's it going?
I don't know. Any other, uh, old business items? Any new business items right now?
I just wanted to remind people that next week, on, on Thursday, this winter concert, and, um, Lenora Manuelson started something that's very innovative. She has asked for alumni to come to sing. She got 60 responses, and two of those singers are on this tour. So come with your tomatoes, next Thursday at 7:00, please, for the winter concert.
I don't know, can we discuss?
Who is it?
It's a personnel matter.
You have to go to the show.
Schedule it, Thursday at 7:00.
Does any member of the public have any open forum questions?
I missed, um, during the reorg, the meeting calendar item. Can you just explain a little more about how the meetings are gonna look next year? Like what they're gonna include, since it's different?
Uh, the piece that differs between the traditional calendar that we, we followed in the past, we still have our, uh, generally two monthly meetings. One is a work session, and the other is the legislative, which is the voting meeting we have here. Uh, so we have two of those every month. In the month of May, we scheduled three meetings, uh, two work sessions couched around a legislative meeting, and the reason that we did that was based upon the, the budget calendar, uh, which provides us an opportunity then to pass our budget during the first week of June, uh, which gives us the opportunity then, the full month of June to go through. Once we have the budget approved, then we're able to submit purchase orders, and purchase orders get ready. Uh, we're not allowed to send out purchase orders until July 1st. So it gives us more opportunity to get the July 1 purchase orders ready, gets our supplies in from the beginning of the school year, inventory to pass down into, into such a classroom locations where they, where they need to go. Due to the lack of, uh, legislative meetings as far as any types of legislation that's passed during the month of July, uh, we crossed off the, the July meeting, uh, but then everything else pretty much stays the same. Two meetings in every other month, with the exception of December also, and December has always just been one, one meeting, which is the reorg and the legislative.
So right now, we generally have three meetings a month, the tech and technology and education, and then the work session committee. So is education and technology gonna be wrapped into the work session?
Yes. Yeah, so the work session, uh, basically, we take all of our, all of our three committees and bring reports, uh, for those. Depending on the, the timing of the year, in some cases, finances is more heavy, uh, facilities more heavy than education and technology. Uh, but we'll still remain committed, uh, to what we've started as far as our practice to advertise the agendas for the work sessions as well, so that provides community members with an opportunity to understand what type of business we're gonna talk at the, at the work sessions.
Thank you.
Any other open forum questions?
I just have a quick comment about Ms. Parrish. She was amazing. What she did alone to help the autistic support life skills program at Crafton was amazing. I just hope whoever comes in, please, please, please support them. That program's not leaving there.[1690.22]